I'd like to call together the Great North City Commission meeting Monday, February 3rd, 2025, on the order. We stand for the invitation. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to come together and work for the good of the city of Eagle Lake. Their time and efforts be effective and fruitful for the city and everyone impacted here.
When the will begins to declare of the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will come through?
Mr. Lewis notified staff that he and his family was ill and he would not be able to attend. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Fuller also notified staff that he had a flu and would not be able to attend. Mr. Peter?
Here.
There we go.
Here. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Troy Fuller from the meeting and Andy Billy, and hope to do a great thing. Do you have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone in the audience who has something that they want to bring to the commission? It's not on the agenda?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address?
My name is Trey McCall. My address is 502 Jackson Street, Lake Wells, Florida.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I have an interest in doing a food trailer here in the city limits of Eagle Lake. And obviously, the zoning doesn't allow that at this time. So, I was wondering if there was a possibility of doing a zoning change or approval on that.
That's something we can look at. I know in the past, the city commission has not, the city has not allowed food trucks. We've told them that, since getting out of the ones that have come through the door, that they weren't allowed. But that'd be up to the commission whether they'd be interested in allowing food trucks within the city limits.
Okay.
And that's something that we could give some direction on, with parent orders for their consideration and something that'll later be.
Yeah, my understanding is there may have been some changes in Florida law regarding food trucks as well. So, if you want to bring that to the city manager and then the city has a planning agency that's on staff, and something that we can look at administrative level before bringing it to the commission if necessary.
Perfect. That worked then. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gosh, Megan, 459, very straightforward.
How you doing, Joey?
For four years, four years, I've been going to these meetings and I've spoken about stormwater drainage on Bird Street. It's embarrassing that we haven't heard on that street. I can make a phone call, but Bill Braswell, Commissioner Braswell, he doesn't want to talk to me. He wants to talk to y'all. What have y'all done? That's what?
We have reached out to the county, because the county, Jake Jarvis.
Come on, Tom.
And I sent his comments. He wants, what they want us to do, and he wants to take the road over, is what they said. They were telling us we got bigger projects than in Third Street. If you're financially concerned about it, have the city take it over. That poor us is what they told us.
That's not fair enough. I'm glad you're back.
Thank you.
But, you know, he doesn't want to talk to me. He wants to talk to y'all.
I can reach out to Bill.
Are you sure?
Yeah. I don't doubt it.
What's happened in the past four years?
Well, we were always dealing with Jake Jarvis, who's the head of highways and safety and drainage and everything. You know, it's his department who we were talking about, talking to.
Do you realize how big an issue this is? It's not just me. Oh, true. And it's not just, it's not just Bird Street. It's Cooly. Why they're in front of the wall there? What? Ever talk to him? What are we gonna do?
That's something that, you know, you could do the county, talk to them about. Do you know whether you could do a joint project with us? That's something that can, that's a dialogue.
It's not something I can do. It's not something that you can do.
That's what I said. I'll reach out to him.
If she needs counsel, just tell her. There's not this, okay? See, I'm not able to.
All right. Well, thank y'all.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Bill.
All right, thank you.
Staff reports?
Hello. In December, we checked out 1,552 items. In January, we checked out 1,435 items. Of course, that's not a complete number, because I am missing the digital and the final numbers. So, I'll have those by the end of the week. In December, we had 118 people attend our programs. In January, we had 125. In December, we had 789 people walk through our doors, and in January, we had 973.
Good.
Good evening. From January's meeting, we had 18 cases brought before you. All 18 of those have been closed due to property owner complaints. Month of February, we've had 10 cases, three for junk trash, excessive debris accumulation, and disposal of junk, trash, and rubbish. One occupied vehicle on residential property. One building permit required for fence, one building permit required for remodel, one aggressive dog complaint, and three rooster complaints. We've performed 10 lean searches, 24 fence permit plan reviews, 11 fence inspections. We've permitted 59 new homes, two renovation permits, five accessory permits, 11 reroute permits, one commercial permit, and six miscellaneous trade permits. And as of January 23rd, 2025, the city has received a certificate of title for the Harlan Harris property located at 739 North Third Street. So, we got out the problem owners of that home.
Been trying to do that for a while.
We got it. It took a while, but we got it. Any questions?
Brian, can you, or if you want to, if not, I can bring you that to any meeting. Did you want to give the commission a little bit of background on the certificate of use program that we're drafting up?
I didn't bring anything with me. We, obviously, we did away with business tax receipt program a couple of years ago.
September 21st.
So, it has inhibited us with commercial properties, making sure they're up to code. Properties, residential properties that have businesses in them, making sure that they're up to code. Any short-term rentals or Airbnb-type residence, we have no, nothing on those. So, what this would allow us to do, it's another program that would allow us to go in, make sure that these businesses have, number one, accounting business tax receipt. And then we could do inspections initially when this comes into play. The property owners have to pay for an application fee of, I believe, $25, if I'm not mistaken. Excuse me, I have paperwork in front of me. I didn't know they were gonna bring this up. And then, after that, commercial properties would be charged a $75 inspection. Residential property with a business in it, we would go in and look at their business area only in the residential property. They would have to pay for that inspection, and I believe it was like $25 for that inspection. And we, again, we're just checking the business area, making sure they don't have an extension cord around the through the walls and undercovers and flooring, stuff like that. And commercial properties would have the paperwork inspection every year when they get their certificate of use registration. And then the same thing with Airbnbs. We would check those, do like a session, a housing inspection, making sure their homeowners were, refrigerators were, because they're out of place for short-term use or Airbnb use. So, we don't want them to, you know, just like you would want to go to a place and have the stuff out there and you pay, you know, a bunch of money for a place that's not up to stock. So, we're, those would be annual inspections that we get paid for.
I apologize too, Brian, for putting you on the spot without giving you any notice. So, the thank you for explaining, so this is something that, that we have a draft that's gonna be likely to come in front of the commission next, on March 3rd, for first reading. And so, the fees will be something that's gonna be set by the commission, so everyone will have an opportunity. So, I just wanted to let you know that that's coming down, down the line. And it seems to be a good opportunity for the city to be able to exercise a little bit more regulation on those, on the businesses.
Especially in commercial businesses. Because right now, we have nothing, you know, we walk into a business and ask for stuff they can just tell us to leave. We pretty much can't land without that. But this would give us a little bit of teeth to go in and make sure they're operating correctly.
And the way it's drafted thus far is that a business who fails to comply with the regulations, actually, there's the teeth in it, the immediate teeth for the city is that they can give the city authorization to discontinue water utilities to, to those folks or the businesses that fail to comply. So, it does have an immediate, gives an immediate reason to make sure that those businesses are doing what they need to be doing. So, that'll be in front of y'all, and you get, we all will have a copy of it. But I've been working with Brian on getting that together, so it's in good format for y'all to, to see. And whenever you do get it, if you have any questions, please feel free to call myself, or Tom, or call Brian, and we'll help you as much as we can to walk you through it. But it's pretty straightforward, I think. I hope.
I believe it is. And it's not something we would, it's a lot.
No, no, we're not, we're not blazing the trail on this one. But I think the thought is to be able to, if the commission desires to have it adopted and then, but not implement it until, be able to give the businesses plenty of notice, so that they know that it's something that they'll need to start looking at and coming into compliance with. So, it won't be immediate that they have to have it the next day. They'll have a few months to be able to get the ducks in the box.
I think we're, kind of like rolling it out October 1st for fiscal year. So, we send them this out, just like BTR notifications for, you know, hey, it's Tiger Renew. So, we do that back in June, July, that type of thing.
Thanks, Brian.
Good evening. These numbers I'm gonna present tonight are gonna cover the numbers in January from our last meeting. So, we ran 267 calls for service. We arrested 57 different subjects. We arrested 58 misdemeanors and nine felonies. 39 of those subjects were arrested for various traffic offenses. One subject was arrested for driving on suspended license, possession of marijuana, and possession of drug paraphernalia. One subject was arrested for soliciting in the roadway. One subject was arrested for possession of meth and drug paraphernalia. Another subject was arrested for domestic battery. Two subjects were arrested for resisting with and without violence in battery of OEO. 11 subjects were arrested for outstanding warrants. And call your, do traffic enforcement and stop the subject for speeding. The subject took off and went over to Miss Kay's and the parking lot and then sped off on foot. They followed behind him in the car, and then he eventually gave up and surrendered. He ended up, once we searched the vehicle, we had fentanyl and some other narcotics in there. He ended up being charged with fleeing to elude, resisting without violence, trafficking in fentanyl possession out of Roseland without a prescription, possession of drug paraphernalia, driving on suspended license, failure to maintain vehicle insurance, possession of fentanyl within 1,000 feet of a daycare, maintaining a vehicle for drug use, and he had outstanding warrant for failure to appear. Guys also conducted 309 traffic stops and had just over 1,500 billion checks of withdrawal notices. So, last year, myself, Tom, and Suzie, we got together and we wanted to honor Chief Sullivan for all the time that he was here. So, the three of us came up with the deputy of the year for the deputies that work in the city of Eagle Lake. Mason, could you step up? So, this is Deputy Michael Mason. So, during the calendar year of 2024, Deputy Mason displayed a sectional dedication and outstanding performance to the citizens of Eagle Lake. Throughout the year, his proactive efforts have demonstrated remarkable skills and commitment, resulting in 274 subjects being arrested or criminally charged. His efforts resulted in 161 arrests and 113 subjects being criminally charged. These 274 subjects were determined to have violated a total of 415 misdemeanors and 41 felonies. Your actions throughout 2024 calendar year have exhibited exemplary professionalism, diligence, and dedication, your determination to protect and serve our community. With each arrest represents countless hours of investigation, and your actions ensure that those offenders are held accountable for their actions. Therefore, on behalf of the city of Eagle Lake, the Polk County Sheriff's Office, you're awarded the city of Eagle Lake deputy of the year. Maybe he'll give somebody else a chance to do it. But 274 arrests, a lot of people ask, what's an average? I, there's really not an average, but somebody, patrol guys, they may have 20, 30, so 274 is a crazy amount. He's out there getting it all day, every day, and, you know, holding people accountable. That's the reason why our prime Miss Sullivan in the city is, is deputies like Mason. So, does anyone have any questions or concerns or anything? I know there's a little bit on Facebook about the white Ford Ranger out in the city park. We got her today. I made her pick up all her trash, and she's been trespassed from the park, so she won't be, won't be so bad for long, so.
Thank you.
I don't have one thing to say, other than something to say on that. It's been a couple of weeks, spending time to keep my own business in this, over the last couple of months, some of the projects we're working on and trying to, we're, we're to some of my limitations right now and trying to get things done, get back to this. That may be, I'm still on the right side, forward and present.
It's good to have you here. Public hearings, consideration of uses for community development block grant allocations in the amount of $16,565. Authorizes in your year to submit a proposal. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'd like an explanation for, for your floor. If you could just explain to the audience what exactly you're voting on?
This is a yearly grant we get from the Community Development Block Grant Program. What we're doing this year is, we, the park that is, that falls in line with that is Eagle Lake Park. And that's where last year, we built up new playground. We're gonna use the money this year to put up swings and things like that there. It's our annual funding. I think we can roll, is it two years now, or three? Okay. It used to be in a roll over a number of years. Now they've limited us to two, which is why we're looking to spend the money this year at this, well, we decided to park.
Anyone in the audience have any questions? Go call, please.
I'll tell you a motion for them.
Hold on. Have a second?
Second motion. I made the motion as a worse.
I'll second. Go call.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
There we go.
Here.
Mr. Peter, yes.
Continuing, you have consideration of the first reading of ordinance number O-25-02.
Okay, yes, ma'am. This is ordinance number O-25-03, an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Eagle Lake, Florida, amending section 2-6, record search fees of chapter 2 administration, article 1 in general, authorizing lean search fees for certain matters of lean search laws, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. And just by way of background, the city commission authorized lean search fees at $50. I believe back in 2020 was when the ordinance was passed, 2020 or 2021. And there have been instances that the front office and Co. Brian have been dealing with, where some companies are in what appears to be an effort to circumvent paying for a lean search fee, which does take quite a bit of staff time and coordination to do these lean searches, are doing them in a piecemeal approach, which, again, appears to be in an effort to circumvent paying the fee, which is taking quite a bit of staff time. So, I was asked to do an amendment to the lean search ordinance. And this new ordinance provides that in the event that there are these types of piecemeal searches that are done, that are deemed to be done in an effort to circumvent the fees, that those businesses will be charged with fees and future requests will not be processed until the prior fees are paid in full. This is just a way to recoup, it's not a revenue, not intended to be a revenue generator for the city, just to recoup some of the staff time that it takes to comply with these requests that come in when homes get sold by title companies and attorneys and such.
I want to change the motion with subject.
I'll lay my motion.
Second.
On this, from the public? Motion. Go call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Peter, yes. There we go.
Yes. Any good business? Consideration of resolution number R-25-07.
Okay, Mayor, resolution R-25-07 is a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Eagle Lake, Florida, urging the Florida State Legislature to enact legislation to provide a public records exemption for municipal clerks and employees who perform municipal elections work or have any part in code enforcement functions of a city, and providing for an effective date. And again, by way of background, there's already statutory public records exemptions for code enforcement officers and law enforcement officers and folks that have to deal with those sensitive types of situations. And oftentimes, the clerk and other staff members are, have to deal with those situations as well, which, again, can be sensitive, and there's been times across the state where sometimes there have been threats that have been made. So, this is urging the legislature to provide that protection as well, at least to be said that we can, that they can, also to clerks and other folks that have to put themselves potentially in uncomfortable situations.
I have a question. If you could just explain that, like in layman's terms, what the yes vote or the no vote would be for on this?
So, when, for instance, a code enforcement officer or a law enforcement officer, by virtue of the nature of their jobs, there is, the Florida legislature authorizes those folks to have a protection. So, their address information, certain other information that would identify where they live, and I think luckily also the telephone numbers, things of that nature, are redacted. So, the public would be able to get those via a public records request. That protection has not been offered for municipal clerks and other staff members. So, this would simply authorize that protection as well. So, if somebody, for instance, our city clerk, if somebody made a records request for her home address or to, pardon me, to the property appraiser's office, that would be exempt information where she lived.
So, right now, I know that we're all public, so anybody can look anything up in Google. So, as far as I know, just police and things like that are the only ones. So, you're saying that you're wanting that to be taken off the internet? Like, I just want to make sure that what we're voting on, we know exactly what this is covering.
So, this is, this is something that, my understanding is the Florida cities is promoting this and trying to urge the Florida legislature to vote on it. So, all this is, is a resolution saying that the city commission of Eagle Lake feels that this is a good idea. Legislature, we would like for you to pass this law that would give the records exemptions to clerks, municipal clerks specifically, as well as law enforcement officers. So, via Google, I mean, all it is is for records requests. So, if somebody's address is available via other mechanisms, it may still be out there, but they couldn't go to the property appraiser's office and demand it via public records request, or they couldn't come to Eagle Lake and say, hey, I demand to get Dawn Wright's home address. They may be able to get it other ways, but the city will at least be able to say, no, that's protected information.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure the audience understood exactly what we were voting on here.
So, it doesn't actually do anything. It just lets the legislature know that the city's in favor of it.
Thank you.
Any motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Go call, please.
Mr. Peter, yes. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
There we go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Consideration of second amendment to the agreement between Polk County Regional Water Cooperative and the city of Eagle Lake, Polk Regional Water Cooperative, Heartland Protection and Sustainable Project.
Don, do you know that one? Sorry.
I can kind of probably get a little bit. Now, I can't give a whole, a whole bunch of information. It's a very long document, if you look at your agenda. But in a nutshell, the city has already approved amendments to the Polk Regional Water Cooperative. There have been amendments that have been approved. But one of the agreements requires, if amendments to the grant are paid, that the city would be required or obligated to amend their master agreement, if you will, to, just to correspond with the grant agreement. So, this is just amending the city's, I'm gonna call it master agreement, with the Port, with your water, regional water cooperative, so that the terms reflect the amendments that the city has already passed. So, it's really kind of a housekeeping issue.
Any motion, please?
I'll, motion.
Second.
On this, any comment? Go call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Peter, yes. There we go.
Yes. Consideration of resolution number R-25-07.
You're with me for a moment. I'm gonna have to scroll through about 200 pages now to get to that one.
This is just some standard grant we have between the city and the state. We're getting it so that 23 lights can be purchased for a dollar.
This is gonna take me a minute to get through. Yeah, once she scrolls to the end of it, it's like 200 pages, then just.
The title for the resolution is just state highway maintenance compensation.
Okay, there's no whole time. Okay, so that's it.
Okay, sorry. Very good.
So, if you could just explain again what, just, I mean, we have people here, so we want to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So, in the DOT right-of-way, there are, there's DOT lights and the city, this is, this is an agreement where the city is going to be performing some maintenance, maintenance, mowing, edging, things like that, Brian. Is Brian here?
He's not here.
Oh, he's not. But just maintenance activities around in that DOT right-of-way. So, rather than the DOT having to get a contract or something, the city's going to do. And so, this agreement is for the city to reimburse, the DOT to reimburse the city for those costs of providing those maintenance activities. There is an agreement, this is a resolution that authorizes the agreement. The DOT sometimes likes to have a separate resolution. So, it's a separate document that says we, we're signing the agreement, so.
You have four motion.
I'll second.
Any more to add? I'll attend.
Yes.
Yes.
You have consent agenda and your age, wage? Any questions?
Yes, because we're a bit, but not, so. Just a brief explanation of what party you're voting on.
With the consent agenda, age, wage, basically approving. We're looking at, unless you know, according to the city commission minutes, every year we have ZMB doing fireworks for our Fourth of July auction, and that's an estimate of $8,000.
Who are you going to vote for?
Yes.
Who are you going to vote for?
Yes. Eagle Lake Municipal Election Administration agreement, the approval of potential election poll workers, the equal municipal election, approval of financials for November and December, approval of the surplus list, which I think took a couple of trucks from here from the coworkers director, and approval of the bad debt list, the Sony amount of three hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Can I make a real quick comment as well? So on, on the consent agenda, this is obviously to know because it's kind of a longer consent agenda than we usually have, if there's ever, you know, any, any item on consent agenda that any commissioner has any questions about, typically what's done and what can be done at y'all's discretion is if the commissioner has any questions, you can actually ask for any of those items to be pulled off the consent agenda, to be a separate agenda item, just to be discussed independently. So just wanted to let you know, if anybody was unaware, that that is something that's available to you, if you don't want to lump it in and want to talk about one detail until questions, that's, that's.
So every month, I always am not in favor of when we lump in financial records with just, you know, something like picking the poll election worker, you know, potential people, or like this week, this month, it's also just signing off on the regular commission minutes. So I've said every month since I've come on in April, that I, you know, every time we're dealing with money and budget, I would like for us to be able to do a workshop in the Sunshine, the Sunshine Law, and have the city manager bring us together and have there be minutes, and we're able to go over and ask questions, because it's financial and it's the city and it's a lot of money. So to this point, it has not been done, but I always ask every, every month. So if moving forward, we could make it that each thing is, because like right now, we're doing items A through H, and it's going to be on one vote, and three things on there have to do with money, a lot of it, then yeah, so we're often doing it independently.
And typically how that's done is, is to say, commissioner would make a motion at the beginning of the meeting, is this just, you know, this, this board can set its own policies, how it wants to handle it, but typically how it's done is at the beginning of the meeting, a commissioner that wants, say, there's a Zen Valley contract for fireworks, if that was something that anybody had a question about, they say, I'm going to make a motion that we remove item B from the consent agenda, so for regular discussion, and then that would, that could be voted on, and then it would be just an item for regular discussion. But again, this commission has a large amount of latitude for setting its own policies on how it wants to handle these particular issues, that's just commonly how it's done in other municipalities and counties. But, so that way, if there is an item that is a particular concern for one or more commissioners, it's something that doesn't, it doesn't have to be lumped in, but typically the consent agenda, you know, these items, even the monthly financials are, are considered a housekeeping issue now that the annual budget, that's usually the workshops, but the monthly is more of a go back and approve the checks that have written, it's all already done or should, you know, be done and consistent with the budget that the commission has already approved earlier in the year, but that I just want, and in part because that's something that you brought up in the past, I just wanted to make sure that all of the commission is aware that just because it's on the consent agenda doesn't mean that you don't have, as a whole, the discretion to remove a particular item if you deem necessary.
So would it be in the realm of being able to pull one of these out now and having it be an individual type?
If that's something that the commission wants to discuss a particular item, if there's a specific, pardon me, specific questions about a particular item, the commission can make that agreement amongst yourselves to pull an item and discuss it independently if you so desire.
So I, I have no problem voting independently within, you know, paying for the fireworks and the regular city commission minutes, and basically everything on here that's not the financials, because when we're just throwing the financials in, but we haven't been told what everything is, and we're just approving it in one of our sums, from the way I've voted in the past, I don't, I'm not comfortable doing that. I would rather know what it is, and I know other cities that the manager has a meeting every month and has the people come in and they do a workshop, and can ask questions, and they can have everything explained to them, but Tom shows him not to do that, so I'm just, I don't, there are things on here I would, I'm great with, but then because of the financial aspect of it, I just don't think that's responsible, throwing that many things into one thing blindly. So yeah, we could, we could pull some of these off and even do them individually, but just the finances, I just.
So what I would recommend is if there's any particular items on the, on the consent agenda that you would like to have pulled, is that you want to make a motion to pull those items from the consent agenda and then put that to the board. If there's an agreement to pull those items, then so be it, if not, then it would be done as a whole, but that's, again, that's, that's in the discretion of this board as a whole. And it would be on a, as per meeting basis, so it wouldn't be, just because it's today, it wouldn't necessarily carry forward for all future meetings. But again, you know, with the, with the financials, if there's a particular question on a line item, that that would be something that you could have a question about this, I'd like to discuss it individually, but that's, again, it's, there's your latitude to handle these things as you see fit.
Okay, so then I guess, Mayor, I guess I would make a motion for us to do two separate votings, one would just be for the non-financial, which would be the approval of the city commission minutes, and the, well, actually, I would.
Could you give me number, I mean, letter?
Sure, sure.
That'd be sort of feature.
Yeah, no problem. So I guess I would say that, let's, let's just make it easy, because we have it already lined up here, if we just vote, I make a motion to just do approval of the city commission minutes and have that just be a vote, and then approval of paying Zen Valley contract for the fireworks, and have that just be a vote, and then go through them, and they each, because they're each important, so I, I would make the motion to just have, just be the votes, just voting on these line items, because they're important.
So you're asking for this meeting to, to do individual votes on each of the consent items, is that what your motion is?
Yes, because that's been since April, that's been, I've had an issue with that each time, because it's, it's really important, there's a lot need there, and I don't think it, it does a disservice to just lump them all together, and they're all equally important.
So that, that was your motion, that's your motion, so if, so that's, so now if that's voted, if it's an up vote, then, then so be it.
I'll second.
I'll say.
So this will just be for, for this meeting, and then voting on the next one as you say.
So first, approval for the approval of the regular missions minutes from January twenty twenty-five. You have some, the audience?
One second.
I'll make a motion for. I'll take.
Yes.
Approval of the Zen Valley contract for fireworks on June twenty-eighth, the amount of eight thousand dollars. It's going on how much?
Three thousand.
Three thousand?
They was five thousand probably twenty years ago, so it's been a while.
Any motion on this?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
In a second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Approval of Eagle Lake municipal election administration agreement?
The only change under the figure this year is the postpost fee.
The amount of closeness.
The pop.
Yes. How will we vote?
Also him.
All in favor?
Yes.
Approval of the potential election poll workers for April's municipal election?
These workers always come from the supervising elections office, she gives us the list, and that is the list that's provided, so they will go down the list and find where to start. I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Approval of the financials for November twenty-fourth, where we're seeing this list of already money being spent?
Yes. Money and budget at this time.
All in favor?
No. So I'm sure that was two, two one, okay.
Approval of the financials for September twenty twenty-four?
You for motion?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Approval of the surplus place? Yes.
And I want to send an auction.
Yes.
About eight trucks, and that we replaced it.
So this is four new trucks, is that what?
No, no, we have old, we have old vehicles that we're looking to surplus and send them off to the auction.
Okay, is that what, the two that were listed in here, the red numbers?
That's correct, yes. And once, I know once a dump truck, you don't have to mention every other ones, but, yeah, they're, they're all vehicles that would be replaced over the last few years.
And then the, the money from that goes where?
Back in the general fund.
We have thirty-four trucks, we need a CDL for three thousand dollars.
That's correct. So our, our public works employees are not required by CDOs or what, we have vehicles that require CDOs to be driving.
Just, all the favor?
Yes.
Approval of the bad debt list? Any amount, three hundred ninety-eight dollars?
I did have one question. So of all the two hundred ninety-eight pages that we were sent for this, for this meeting, there's, there's pages in, in here that have, it says outstanding balance, and they're all in red, and that's like a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and just wondering, is that, am I understanding what's being said?
I understand, I use my hand. But I would have to look at that.
That's within the financials, they have, they go get that.
So, as I saw, that is a hundred and seventy-five thousand in outstanding debt, and this says three hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So the bad debt list should be at the very end.
That's just at the end, the financials are in the beginning, I mean, maybe.
It should be the very, those are write-offs for water bills, as some folks may have moved out of town and never paid their last, their final water bill, we get, the city's got to get them off the books at some point, otherwise.
So we also, we don't have, we don't have a debt collector, because it's saying that the city's owed a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from bad debt.
No, no, no.
That's separate.
That's a separate one, looking at the financials.
Yeah, but we're voting on financial of bad debt list.
No, we already voted on it.
No, the bad debt list is for utility customers that haven't paid their water bill. By sending them to bad debt, it allows us to send us a bucket.
So that's what I'm saying, is that, that list, because I'm seeing two different things, but they're both technically bad debt, so I'm just wondering, this one's is three hundred ninety dollars.
Can you, can you get the phone for myself, and show me what you're talking about, I'm not sure what we're talking about, so I can change the answer.
Because we didn't prove the budget until, so it's hard to believe that we've got a hundred, we're over budget by a hundred eighty dollars.
What, what page are you looking at?
Oh, hold on, it's going to take a minute.
Yeah, so I know it's long, it's just, most of that was the DOT, or the water, water rid stuff, that was the lion's share of that.
Yeah, that's, that's. See, this is why I like the workshop, is because then we can come together and ask these questions and figure it out. Okay, so, yeah, so it says City of Eagle Lake, outstanding checks to utility fund, so a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in outstanding utility?
No, that's money that we've paid.
Okay, because it's in red and everything else is in black, and it's saying outstanding So those are all then just in limbo the day that everything's printed out, that's what I'm wanting to, like, let me clear this up. You see these pages right here? Outstanding checks.
These are the checks that not has cashed yet.
Okay.
These are checks that the city has sent people for refund on their deposit, and they haven't cashed it, so she has the list in outline.
Okay, but you understand, because they're red and they say outstanding, and it's pages, I'm just like.
They're not in the financials, they're not in the, in the other.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify, because we're voting on something here, financials that is showing three hundred dollars versus that large amount that was sent to us as
So we have, there was a motion from Commissioner Perry, I guess, I think that's the last time I called on the motions, right?
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any other? All in favor?
Yes.
Yeah, the only update that I have for you at this point was, I have heard from one of the attorneys that's working, representing the city and other cities in that Form Six litigation, that I update periodically on, there, they, there are cross motions for summary judgments that have been, the court has been briefed on those, but still don't have any final answer, but as far as right now, the Form Six is still, is still under the injunction, so it's unenforceable at this point, but we're just waiting on, on the court to set a hearing on these, these cross motions, so hopefully that has no update right now, other than that it's in the court process, so we're just, we're, we're on hold right now, but so hope to have some information from you when it comes, just as a final.
Good pleasure. Commissioner Pieda?
Thank you.
I'll also, I can see that. Okay, we call it that?
Yes. It's in steps.
I'll make a motion and second for a verdict?
No motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody?